Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the city council work session for Tuesday, September 3rd. I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday weekend, and we're back on Tuesday, ready to go to work. For those of you who are visiting with us today as citizens, our work sessions are held the first and third usual, usually Mondays of every month, and it's a time for the city council and city staff to get together and talk about upcoming future agenda items and other issues of concern to the city. Unlike our regular council meetings where the public is invited to attend and comment, both on agenda and non-agenda items at our work sessions, we don't accept public comment, but we certainly welcome the public to attend. But it is a time for us to interchange between council and staff. So with that in mind, I'm going to, we have a pretty busy schedule this morning, so I'm going to jump right into our first discussion item, which is an update on design of the new Public Works facility. And for that, City Manager Bill Bell and Public Works Director Jim Scheid.
I think I'll get us started off with this. I have a presentation, I'll share our site plan that was in the packet. Maybe. Go again. Try again. Let me just try again.
Yeah.
It's good our founding fathers didn't have to go through this.
Had to hunt down a coil to get a pin.
Until they run out of ink, though. It had a long weekend, too.
Yeah. All right. There we go. Okay. All right, now I can, I can talk. I can't talk and find the presentation at the same time, so. All right, so this is discussion and update on the progress we've made on design of our Public Works facility. No item for vote, just a discussion and update for, through design. So as a couple reminders, we began the design process earlier this year after acquiring property for this facility last year. We've been working with Blythe Group, has been our design team, and they have several members on their team from local and even from the front range as part of this design. And they're doing everything from verifying our space and needs program all the way through construction documents. So it's quite a law, a long process and a lot of design work to be done. The goal is obviously in design this year, and that's where, that's what we're presenting on today, and likely being finished with design next year. The goal of construction documents towards the end of next year. The site plan that we're talking about today is kind of the first big milestone in design. It's relatively basic in layout, but is actually really important to the design. A lot of things went into this. So again, our space and program needs, that determining what types of uses need what type of building and what's adjacent to what, what flow happens through the building and the site. And so there's a lot of things that go into this that helps put this together, and it's kind of the starting blocks for the rest of the design process. So although it's really simple in that it's just shapes on the, on the drawing here, it is actually really important to our overall design. And our goal this year through design, by the end of this year, is to get through schematic design. And that would be basically materials, so building types and material types throughout the project, so that we can get a good cost estimate. So that's our goal this year, is to get where we can do a cost estimating exercise to really put a construction cost to this project. So I'll start off with the, with the site plan, just to kind of give us orientation of where we're at. On the left side of the screen over here, this would be Oak Grove, so to the left of my cursor would be Russell Stovers. And this portion of the road down here that my cursor's on now, this doesn't exist. So this is, this would be future extension of Rio Grande. So the Rio Grande and Oak Grove intersection is kind of right over here. This would be a roundabout. So yeah, this, again, not shown in this drawing, but this, this would be a future roundabout in this location right here. And then this is the main parcel of property that we purchased recently, and obviously is the, the main site for Public Works. The public entrance, so like the main, main public entrance here would be around this side, main lobby to the building here. One of the primary things we wanted to do differently with this building is access to our expanded recycling. So this would be much easier, more convenient, and more attractive access to expanded recycling programs. That's things like green waste, tires, TVs, those programs that we offer to the community. And then, of course, this, this main building here is administration, so this is our offices, our training, training area, something else we don't have now also is a, areas for training, so that is incorporated into this. And, and then these portions of the building, like the real long pieces, are a tempered storage area, which would be mostly shop space for, you know, our water, sewer, streets, parks, those divisions, storing equipment, and also shop space. And call it tempered storage, which is like warehouse. It'd be a high ceiling height, heated and cooled tempered storage. So that's what these long buildings are, and we're working through, actually, the next step to design, obviously, is going to be the layout of the interior, right? How exactly that gets divided up. But for now, again, we're just looking at the site plan and where it lays out in the site, to make sure there's enough space for turning radiuses, radiuses and everything around each building. And of course, fleet maintenance, and then this portion of the building would be for trash recycle. An area on the site that is like semi-secure is meaning it is behind gates, but it is open to other operations than just Public Works, is this area of the site here. And this is our fuel station, wash bay, water fill station. Again, that's something we don't have now. And this is meant that it could be allowed for use either by other internal departments, even like the police department being one of them, so they use our wash building and fuel station, other partners within the community, rec district being one of those, that they would have access to this portion of the site, but not have access into our secure yard. Again, that's another improvement over the site we have now, that we would be able to limit access to certain portions of the site and only keep access for our operations in Another thing that's gone into this is the front-facing portion of the building. So this, this side facing what would be Rio Grande here is, is meant to be obviously what would be the viewable from the street and the public access point. So the goal through design there is to make it very inviting. We like, we want people to come into our building. We want people to come, either have a service they need or be able to come access our customer service. Again, I keep saying we don't have these things now, kind of use our existing site as a, as a great bad example, but it, but it helps us to know what we do need, and having that inviting feel to the public is, is important to this project. And also for fit into not only the existing area and neighborhood, but into the future development of this area. As Rio Grande would be built out further to the south, it likely comes with development of, of other properties than, than ours. And so we want this to fit into what will be here in the future as well. So we're definitely keeping that in mind when we come to design, especially on the front-facing and the, and this side of the facility. And some of our backyard operations, we may, will shield it with one, with landscaping or fencing possibly, but keeping in mind that we want this front side of the building to be attractive and also very functional.
Jim, I got a quick question.
Yeah.
So for public access to the, the actual building itself, is it going to be gated access or just open access that the secure areas outside of that?
It would be just open access. So this right here would be the, the public entrance, and there's no gate here. They, they would come into this parking out here, and this is visitor parking. No, no gates here, so they'd be able to come in here, park whenever, and then come into our lobby, which would be right here. So there'd be a public entrance that's open all the time. If they were to be coming in to drop something off, that, then they would have to come up to a gate here and, you know, if they have to pay for it or whatever the situation may be. So it wouldn't be gate access to any service, but if they were coming just to come in and ask a question or whatever may be their reason, they would have open access without having to come through a gate.
Much better than our current situation.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, talk about lack of curb appeal.
Yeah, exactly. I'll show you kind of this southern portion of the site as well. This is a, this portion of property, city already owned prior to the recent purchase, but this, this lot over here was, was purchased, I think, 2016 or so. It was a land swap, actually, I think, at the time. But either way, this, this portion of the site is planned for, kind of basically our storage area, our yard space mostly. Salt sand storage for, for winter operations. The large square that's shown in the middle is our CDL training area, so basically left as a, as an open area that we can use for CDL training. And then there'd be some storage along the perimeter for just different materials. So this is, this is basically an open yard space. A lot of this is encumbered by the floodway, and so it's not able to be built on anyway. Some of the perimeter stuff is outside of the floodway and would be able to be built on, but that's why majority of this is left yard, is because it's actually in the floodway of Dry Cedar Creek.
Where's the access?
This would, would be off of Anderson, so right now Anderson ends right about here. It's just a dead-end road. This, when Rio Grande is built out, Anderson would be extended to, to meet Rio Grande. And so we would, access would be right here off of this, this, this side of Anderson. Connect trail would, would continue along the side, and it's, it's here along the roadway, and that would tie into where it's at now. So it currently goes right, right through here, and this would obviously reconnect through that. So as, as construction, road, roadways built, the connect trail would, would maintain connectivity throughout that and also as part of our future plan to make sure that, that's incorporated and that it's tied in nicely to the, to the new design.
Jim, that connect trail also will continue on down, on the side of Rio Grande, so there's going to be a T there? So it'll continue all the way down to connect with, by Target and?
Yeah, yep, exactly. I guess I didn't go into that as much, but yeah, it, it starts, you know, right, right about here where the roundabout will, will be. This, they'll be on both sides of the road, actually. There's, there's one shown here along this side. This would be the, you know, the existing, or it'd be a duplication of the existing riverway trail. There'd also be one on the other side that helps tie in what these existing trails here that go across the, the bridge across the river there would tie into this side. And then, you're right, that would continue all the way down, this Rio Grande extension, all the way down to River Landing. Yep. So that'll go into some of the sequencing coming up and what our plan is moving forward with the project, and then I think Bill will go over some of our strategies for funding and financing. So our plan, coming up the rest of this year into next year, would be try to get that irrigation ditch relocated. So it is causing, you know, issues on the site as far as water infiltration throughout it. Irrigation ditch is basically the highest point on the site, and it runs right through the middle. So as part of our final design, we would relocate that ditch and pipe it. And so that's what we're working on this year, is getting that design completed so that we can move the irrigation ditch and get it out of the middle of the site, pipe it, so it quits causing water issues throughout the site, and then also fill the site enough to where we could say it's up to a base layer or a base level, kind of making it pad-ready, I guess, is the, is what we're after. The site does need quite a bit of fill. It obviously was ponds in the past, and so there's a lot of it that's, it's quite a bit low. We've already been transporting quite a bit of fill material from other projects to the site to be used for fill. Not nearly as much as we need, but there's a, a large pile out there going, pretty proud of our mountain we're building. And so the goal, again, this, design this year, are actually working on it currently, is to move the irrigation ditch and fill the site to be pad-ready. And, and that work, we would like to start in early next year, likely January, really. That's really good winter work before water comes on, and likely that would extend into middle of next year. That's, it's quite a bit of work, a lot of fill work to get that filled up. So that's our sequence, and also around the end of year, we would likely again have a good cost estimate for the overall project, and that'll be, that'll be really helpful in helping kind of move along the, the funding and the financing part of, part of the project. So with that, I'll kind of hand off to Bill, and we talk about upcoming steps for funding.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Jim, just because of my, I'm curious, curious, what's a covered decant basin?
That, that is where we would clean out our sweepers. So what is, it's meant is a, kind of a demudding area. So it's a, a system and that's made for, if you had a really muddy truck or a street sweeper that you need to wash out, instead of washing it into what would be like a wash bay, where you plug everything up and be really hard to clean out, this is actually made for that. So you have a truck that's got a lot of heavy mud on it, you can wash it off, and it falls into the bottom, and it's meant where you can clean out with a skid steer.
Very good.
So it's a, a heavy demudding or street sweeper cleanout area, and it's protects our stormwater and sanitary sewer, so it's a designed system for very heavy demudding.
Great idea.
Yes.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions for Jim, just let you know on the timing of the financing for this. So I've talked with Kyle from DA Davidson, that's who helped us with the police department project and, and the project creating Colorado Outdoors and the Move Mo projects in the past. So it looks like, timing-wise, we would come back right after the November election, because that affects the bond markets quite a bit, and we would have Kyle from DA Davidson come to a work session and talk to all of you with a lot of details. He's analyzed a few different options for us. We looked at USDA Rural Development Loan Program. We looked at traditional COPs and, and public offerings, and, and then a combination of both of those things. And because of our good bond rating at the city, the interest rates we would, we would get through the, the COP issuance and the public sale would be much better than the terms with the USDA Rural Development Loan. And the timing is better as well. It takes almost a year to get through the USDA Rural Development Loan process, and with the other one, like on the police department, it's about 90 days from the beginning when you approve it, and then it gets to the public offering. So he'll come and talk to all of you at our second meeting in November and give you a lot more detailed answer questions, but that looks like the best alternative to us. Also, with the time value of money, we did look at an option of, you know, putting $5 million into next year's budget to do the dirt work and the fill, all the stuff that Jim was just describing, and then you start other pieces the following year and the following year. Because of the time value of money and the way the interest rates would fall out, Kyle thinks it'd be better to do it all at once, and that way we're not taking away budget capacity for street maintenance and those types of things. And so when you see your proposed budget at our budget retreat, that $5 million is not included in there because it would be wrapped into this overall project. You can also start work early and repay yourselves if you do the proper resolutions and those types of things. So I have more detail, if you have questions and want that level of detail today. Otherwise, we'd get into a lot of that detail when Kyle comes and talks about it in November. Do something in December and get work started in January, February.
The one question I have is that when the county did the USDA loan, that there were a lot of restrictions on that loan as well, as far as utilization of?
It's federal money, so there's a lot of federal red tape and a lot of restrictions where if you do the COP, you don't have that issue as well.
Excellent.
Bill, I have a question concerning the ditch. I know in the past that, that there used to be funds available through the water users for salinity projects or whatever to take those drainage, those water ditches and cover them so that they'd have more water to use further down. I know that some of the farmland in my area town has done that over the years, and, and I was just curious if there was a possibility that we might look into something like that, because it was very cost-effective.
Yeah, we're aware of those, and the funding on that's gone up and down. I don't know exactly where it is right now. Given the relatively small scale of this, I don't know if it'd be worth the federal stipulations that would come with it. You know, a lot of this is geared towards getting this, kind of controlling our fate, getting this site done and ready, so we don't end up with another water season of, of kind of water saturating the site. We can certainly dive deeper to confirm that's the case, but at first cut, that would be my take on it, is it's likely not worth it at this scale, given all the federal implications that would come with it, dollar-wise.
It looks like there's a lot of ditch there. Didn't used to be.
Yeah, and the other piece of this, too, is it's, it's not water users, and they plenty of salinity ditches that aren't water users' ditches, but this is a standalone ditch. It's got its own water right off of Dry Cedar Creek. It's, it's called the supply ditch, and it's, it's really early, I think, pre-compact water right, that's shared among the city rec district, a couple users downstream. And so it's not part of water users' system and stuff, which sometimes can, if it is part of it, can sometimes make your grants more competitive. So that might be a disadvantage if we were to pursue those kind of funding, but, but yeah, we can dig into all that to confirm for sure.
Anything else?
The other thing I might say on Rio Grande as well, too, so, you know, the sequencing of when do we extend Rio Grande, and how does that play into this project? That's still up in the air. You know, there's kind of two ends of the spectrum. I think the, the low end of the spectrum would be you'd build enough to at least get to the entrance to the public workshop. It would stay kind of a terminal street, so you'd have signage at the roundabout that says, you know, no outlet, and, and people would learn that eventually. You know, the challenge is, is it looks like it wants to go south, right? For out-of-towners, that'd be a challenge. So in a perfect world, we can build all of this together. One of the things we have proposed for the 25 budget is hiring a consultant to pursue federal money. So you kind of want to decouple the rest of the Rio Grande project from the public workshop, so that it, you don't end up getting some federal money on there that would then tie up or slow down the public work site. So the public work site can run on its own under COPs or what have you. And then this, you know, if the opportunity arises, either internal funding-wise, federal funding-wise, or likely a combination of both, we can hit the ground at the same time, and when they're open, they're both open. In a perfect world, it'd be the, the great end of the spectrum, but the realities of funding will play into where we land within that, between those two. Definitely on the radar and something we're thinking of, because if you remember, this was the last piece to acquire. So with this acquired last December, we have everything we need to, to do the rest. Now it's just funding.
So you're thinking of, that we would put the roundabout in before we do this section or with that extension?
Most likely with at least getting up to the public workshops. You're going to have to come to the intersection, the drainage is pretty complicated there between drainage and irrigation and sewer, and they're all shallow and kind of limiting of the whole site. There's a lot of work that needs to be redone there. It would probably make sense to put the roundabout at this time and make that part of at least the public workshop. But again, if that's not a financial reality, that's something that could adjust as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything further from staff or council on that one? If not, let's move on to discussion item 1B and the Ogden Road-Lutzenheiser Bridge Replacement Project Contract Award and City Engineer Mr. Murphy.
Mayor, let me get my presenter going here. I'm the same, I can't find and think and enter at the same time. All right, so we're pretty excited about this one, again, because the current bar is so low. This will be a drastic improvement for our community. So that we're talking about the replacement of the Ogden Road-Lutzenheiser Bridge Crossing. This is just immediately east of the apartments that are going in there, kind of on the north side of the rec center. I'll dive a little deeper than I normally do, just because this was an unbudgeted project for '24. It was a relatively tight bid with some contention surrounding it, so I'll kind of dive into all of that, just so you get the full story here. But the contract recommendation is for $988,000. That comprises two different contracts. One is to KND Construction, which Kevin and Diane, Diane, here with us, that's where the KND comes from. And then Delmont Consultants, who was the design engineer on this one, and kind of actually got us out of a pickle on what's become, I'm not calling it an emergency project yet, but it's a, it's an almost emergency project. So to help orient you, this is the rec center here on this figure, the roundabout at Woodgate and Ogden, and then the Lutzenheiser Canal, which is a Bureau of Reclamation Canal operated, owned by the Bureau of Reclamation, operated by the Uncompagiated Valley Water Users Association. Pretty important canal, carries about 100 to 130 CFS of irrigation water to, you know, this kind of quadrant of the valley. And because it's flowing non-stop, you can only work on it when it's off. You could otherwise, but it's extremely expensive. So we generally try and plan these projects for the winter shutdowns. In this case, the existing crossing, you can see the picture here, is, you know, a little more than two lanes, really no pedestrian facilities at all, no sewer going east of here. There's a water line span across the top of the canal. Pretty dangerous, frankly, you know, so if a car were, with those very little shoulders, if a car were to run off that road and end up in the canal, they would be pinned, and that would likely not be a good outcome. Also, the pedestrian, obviously, if a pedestrian meets a car in those narrow areas, that's not a comfortable experience for anybody, bicycles, all of it. Yep, yep. So again, Eric kind of mentioned that it's, we love these projects because they're, it's such a, it'll be such a drastic improvement over what is there now. The existing pipes are twin five-foot corrugated metal culverts, which anybody who's done any work in this valley knows that our soils don't treat corrugated metal culverts very well. I'm surprised they actually made it this far. For that reason, we had been planning to replace this in the 2025, 2026 shutdown. It was brought to our attention this summer that some piping that we'd actually kind of been keeping an eye on, we're kind of the original drivers for the project, was accelerating. And so the pipes had deformed, corroded enough that water was leaving the culverts, falling along the edge, and starting to eat away some of the road embankment. It's safe to pass, we're keeping a really close eye on it, but that could change, you know, so we're, we're, we're hoping for two more months until we can get to this shutdown. Let's say it's, it's stable for now, but it, we don't feel, or we're not comfortable that it could go another season. And as a result, that's why we kind of re, or moved around some of the project scheduling, I'll go into that a little deeper later. And so the project would plan to kind of do the full, more robust replacement while we're in there. We got to do some of the utility work anyway. To us, it made sense to put in what its eventual width is going to be. You know, as a priority for the city has obvious, been for a long time to continue the pedestrian accommodations on Ogden, which, you know, is challenging for various reasons as you get to the east, but every little incremental win we can get, we want to take. And so with the apartments going on the south side, we were able to get sidewalk up to their entrance, to kind of help orient you here. This is the entrance to the new apartments. This is Kelly Drive to the north, and then the canal is right here. So with that sidewalk up to here, this gives us the opportunity to extend that further to the east, to at least get across the bridge. We do recognize that at this point, it does go to nothing, but we don't want to get to a point in the future where all of a sudden we, sidewalks built elsewhere and we live, the bridge is the missing link, because it's a hard thing to do. Now we're in there for other reasons. The thought was, go ahead and make it wide, wide enough for the bridge to have pedestrian accommodations on both sides. So you'll see sidewalks on both sides now, get rid of that water line span, put that below the canal, which is a lot better for numerous reasons. And then extending sewer as well. So again, there's no sewer coming up towards the east. So this would bring the sewer underneath the canal, which opens up kind of continued development of this area. It's been a hindrance to development in this area with all of the rec center and the apartments going in there, this is kind of the next logical progression, that development would continue marching towards the east. This facilitates that. Again, if a project, a single product were trying to do that, it probably wouldn't be cost-effective for them to take on this whole bridge undertaking, so while we're in there, it makes sense to do the, at that time, relatively simple sewer extension, to at least leave that option open for future development. And we do have, that's a Black Canyon Flats product you guys heard about a couple weeks ago, so there is multifamily product in the pipeline eyeing this area. And one thing I will say, too, is they donate us, are dedicated to us at no cost, the right-of-way along their Ogden frontage recently, a couple weeks ago, to kind of help facilitate, you know, those extensions and get it all ready for it. It's something that would happen naturally with development, but anytime we can get right-of-way secured at any time, well, the- right of way secured, at any time, while the strike while the iron's hot, and you have people that are cooperative, it's a great thing for our community. So, of the 16 or so we need on there, two are out of the way now.
Yeah, and I wanted to mention that that Black Canyon Flats project, since it is affordable multifamily housing, that's a priority for us, and has been for the last few years. And so for us to be able to help with the acceleration of more affordable housing in the valley, I think that's a great win-win-win. So I'm pretty excited to see that.
Yep, yep. And we're, right now, this is the sidewalk turnover. If that follows within two years, it will quickly become a very important connection for a high-density development, so.
Scott? One more quick question, that, looking at the design drawings, I can't magnify it enough to see the width of the sidewalk. Is that our standard six-foot, or is it an eight-foot sidewalk?
Um, so they're eight, but it actually ends up being about nine. So we have a little bit of, because of the exact widths, when you buy 70 feet of box covert, you end up with about 72 to 73, because every joint has a little bit of room in it. They don't go exactly together. So, any extra we get through the box would become extra. So it becomes about eight to nine feet of width on each side.
And that has our standard safety rails along the edges, like, similar to all of our other canal crossings?
Yep, yep. So, yeah, on the zoomed-in version here, and I do apologize, trying to fit them in the packet and make them readable is a challenge, but, so we'll build the full width here, which is the 48-foot pavement width. We've designed, as part of the sidewalk product, we actually designed Ogden through this area to make sure everything works vertically and horizontally, because we're building it in pieces. We want to make sure that they all match and don't have to get redone. And so we have centerline location and profile established. We'll build the full pavement here, so you just kind of have a abnormally wide pavement, so that someday when Ogden is wide, and that pavement will just tie straight to it, you won't have to redo the bridge. And so in this interim condition, you'll have the two travel lanes right in the center. You have a really wide 12-foot shoulder, and then curb and gutter, and then an eight-foot sidewalk, and then a railing. So, a lot safer, obviously, if a car wants to try and leave the road. You're contained, not just by the railing, but by space, and then, obviously, for pedestrian safety, walking across, that they don't fall down into the canal. And that'll be our standard wrought iron, or not wrought iron, but rusted metal railing, like what we have along the connect rail, staying consistent with that look throughout the system. Any questions on the bridge itself before I move on to the bidding?
Go for it.
So on the bidding, we put it out on August 1st, open bids on August 27th. I don't know if you've noticed, but we've gotten a little longer with our procurements, with the market as competitive as it's been. We've noticing that giving more flexibility on, instead of a standard two weeks, we've been doing about double that. We try and go three to four. We got seven bids on this project. KND, the lowest, at 944, and then ranging up to 1.2 million. And you can see from table one there, pretty tight clustering around the bottom, and then a pretty tight clustering in the middle, and really no extreme, usually we get one outlier that's way out there, but that wasn't the case here. And I'll scroll that just for, just so you have it. And then, so, you can see, we have a really tight bid there, for the bottom two, 944 versus 953. A lot of times, all of our bids are written to have selection criteria based on price, reference considerations, qualifications, and, you know, quality of their work plans. So within the bid documents, we ask them to put together, you know, a list of their experiences on these types of projects, references, the team that they plan to assign, schedule, suppliers, things of that sort, and kind of understand, make sure they have the horsepower to do the work. So we use those information, use all of that information to then, you know, rate our contractors of what we feel is the best balance of, you know, price, qualifications, risk, all of those things. And I'll dive into that a little bit deeper here after this, but, unique one here, so KND was the low bid. We have good experience working with them. They did the Miami Hillcrest Roundabout for us, and it went really well. The second lowest bid was Kiboski at 953. So if you do figure in local preference, which is a 5% break for Montrose County, 3% for adjacent counties, Kiboski did get a higher rating on the pricing side of things, but KND was higher rated through the qualifications, experience, the other categories, that they ended up ultimately a higher ultimate score. Some, something I'll say, those scores are available, they're public record. We don't put them in the packet, because sometimes if there's a bad contractor or something, we've had a bad experience, it's a low score, and we don't want to put people's dirty laundry out, you know, out in the open. But those scores are available if anybody needed them. And so, from that process, the recommendation is KND, as what we consider the best value contractor for the project. And then, the other piece of that, as I mentioned earlier, was the contract for Delmont Consultants at 44.5. Those are time and materials contracts, so that we only use what they, what we need. Generally, those have all come in typically at 60 or 70%. They're typically a pretty, shoot high, just in case, because we don't know. And sometimes they help cover us in vacations and things like that with staff, so. As far as the project schedule and traffic control, let me scroll down to an excerpt from the plans. This red line shows the kind of proposed, the main proposed detour route. So, again, somewhat microscopic, but the intent is to detour the primary Ogden traffic onto Bridges Drive. And that's impactful, that's no small detour. The reason we don't take them to Odell, which is closer, so Odell is right down here, is it's not really built to handle that volume of traffic. So it's a relatively small road, the bridge there is narrow. It's also slated to be replaced, and so if you had put that much beating on it with that much traffic, it's not designed for that type of loading yet. You know, obviously, we plan to improve that bridge. The other piece of that, though, is the traffic side of it. So, if every car coming down Ogden now goes to Odell, you can imagine that intersection at Odell and Woodgate getting pretty backed up, which it does, you know, to some degree already. It's long-range slated to be a roundabout as well. And so, we're doing, you know, what we call soft closures, so we kind of warn of the closure ahead, and try and push them on to the primary detour route. If short cutting on Odell does become a problem, we would likely have to close it, do a hard closure with barricades all the way across at Ogden. So, those residences would still be able to get out to Woodgate, but not out to Ogden to go, if they were eastbound, they'd have to go out to Woodgate, and then over to East Oak Grove Road. The, you know, schedule-wise, this is scheduled to occur starting ideally in November, when the water turns off. Typically, the water turns off about Halloween. Because we got a good jumpstart, we're hoping we can get a lot of materials ready to go, so that we can be wrapped up in February, with the idea being, as soon as this project starts, we would jump over to the Woodgate Roundabout. We can't close Oak Grove and Ogden at the same time. And so, what, the Woodgate, Ogden, or the Woodgate East Oak Grove Roundabout is out for bid right now, and there's some work that they could probably start around the edges before the road opens, but the idea would be, as soon as the bridge is done, they would, the hot plants wouldn't be open yet, and so they'd be put together as a gravel surface that the contractor would maintain in the interim. And then as soon as the hot plants open for the year, we would pave that using flaggers, so we wouldn't have another closure, because at that point, the Woodgate construction ideally would be underway. And so we'd do one lane, alternating closures, probably in the middle of the day, to try and do that patching. It's a pretty quick, you'd probably have that paved and prepped in a day or two.
Around April 15?
Around mid-April, yep. So you kind of end up with this gravel interim in March and half of April. But, yeah, those usually open around Easter. Let's see, anything else on the schedule? So then diving into the financials of it. So, again, this was, because this was scheduled for 2025, it wasn't included in the 2024 budget, but we did plan to start the Woodgate Roundabout in 2024. So the first piece, down payment on the Woodgate Roundabout was scheduled for 2024 at 1.15 million. So, because that won't start now until March, those funds more or less can be reallocated towards the Ogden project. The Ogden project does include some budget proposed for 2025, because this project will span both years, and so we rebudget for what would occur in 20, the maximum that may occur in 2025. But, at the end of the day, the funds are available there because of the timing. And then, the 2025 budget includes full proposal to build all of Woodgate and East Oak Grove next year, which is likely looking to be March through September, would be the Woodgate Roundabout.
So, a quick question on that, is that, since both projects were already in our budget forecast, that's basically going to be a wash?
You're just kind of moving stuff around.
Yeah, it's just a reallocation of funding that already has been allocated and already exists, we're just switching the timing on it.
Yep, yep. Yeah, the overall expenditure, three years from now, between the two is the same. We're just bumping one in front of the other, yep. The last piece I want to talk about on the, that was in the bid packet, was the permitting. So because this is a bureau facility, we have to permit this replacement through them. So, you know, everything I talked about previously is under our control. The permitting is somewhat out of our control. It's been started, but there's, there's a lot to it. So there's, it's a, it's a Form 299 with the Bureau, which includes wetlands delineations, wetlands permitting with the Army Corps, consultation on archaeological and historical, which are all, don't expect any issues, but they just take time. So you just got to kind of get in the federal hopper, and they've been extremely responsive. They understand the urgency, and so I'm confident we'll get there. The nice part is, we set everything up early to get ahead of them on the, on the sizing of everything. So we've got an initial buy-in on the sizing and all hydraulic calculations. So they've given us the okay on that, which the nice part about that is, you know, if awarded, we could then order the box culverts right away, which is our longest lead item. So, best-case scenario, we order those, they show up about the time we're starting in November, and all is good. Worst-case is, you know, say the permitting does hold it up, or there's, you know, some unforeseen roadblock that we don't know about yet. We would have to revisit the big, larger overall, so you, you know, the show must go on. We would likely look at some kind of interim stabilization, so that the, we could move on to the Oak Grove Roundabout, get that done, and maybe come back the following winter. But, we sure don't hope it comes to that. I think that, and I think that's pretty unlikely, but I wanted to just make clear on the record that there is some pieces of this. Usually, by the time we get to this stage, projects are fully in our, you know, within our arena, and we have control over the schedules and timelines. This one is somewhat out of our control that way. But, so I think the last thing I want to dive into was a little deeper on the selection process. Before that, any questions on the packet materials so far?
I do have one quick question, that, when I used to work construction, I worked on a concrete crew, and we did these box culverts poured in place. And now it's a prefab product?
Depends on the size. You can go up to 16 feet precast, which is pretty large.
But, that's pretty big.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of the bigger highway ones are all cast in place. You know, we don't have, if we can, generally, as a general, if we can precast, we like to, because our concrete crews are just really busy and spread thin. In this case, the wing walls are all cast in place. So that would be a local crew doing all that work, which is a significant chunk of work. But if you can get the, get the box covert taken care of, that, that makes the wing walls, you know, a lot more feasible within the time that we do have, especially in winter conditions.
Accelerates the timeline as well.
Yep, yep. So to help condense that schedule, and get as much work done ahead of time as we can. So, one thing I will dive into, there was some contention on this bid. You know, in our 10 years, we've had contention twice now, this is our second one, where a local contractor felt that it should be awarded to them, you know, based solely on the, that they're local and the local preference alone. So I did want to take a moment to kind of talk about our process. You can understand, if you do get asked about it, how we arrived at the conclusion we arrived to, and how we go about it, so that you're aware. So, when we receive bids, we dive into every one of them, go through their work plans, their, obviously, check the math on the bid form itself, and you'd be surprised how common, sometimes the number's different when we plug in the math, just due to a rounding error, they changed something, or messed up a formula or something. Check in, go through the work plans on all the references, check references, check ask-around, as needed to kind of paint the picture if we don't work with them, or haven't worked with them in the past. And then, after all of that's been digested, we get together with kind of a review panel, which is comprised of my department in engineering, and then the design engineer. And the reason for that, we kind of want a spectrum of, of, you know, in my world, I'm more focused on the admin and contract, and, you know, this arena, and my guys are in the fields with, with the contractors, and are familiar with the work they're doing, not only on our jobs, but other private jobs, because we have to inspect a lot of the site development work, or subdivision work. And then the design engineer brings kind of a regional perspective, because they're working for clients outside of Montrose that have had experiences that we might not know about. Through that, we try to come to consensus through our rating program, of essentially what's, what's the best selection and recommendation for our city, taking into consideration all of it. We, we spend a lot of time in this arena, and we, we value it. We want a process that's obviously very fair and consistent, because we need our contracting pool, and it's, it's, it's fragile. If contractors feel like they're not getting a fair shake, or something wasn't per the process, they'll stop bidding our work. It's a competitive market. We're very fortunate to have the pool we have, and I consider that pool, you know, Montrose-Delta junction, for the most part. We get, pretty rarely, we get a bid from the front range, but for the most part, they're within this local regional pool. And a lot of our contracting pool has entered it and not left it. You know, when I started, we had, I think, one bid on our first capital project, and that was during the recession. You know, we now consistently get five to seven, and they, they value it. They value the relationship, they like working with us, you know, from what we hear, that's what they tell us, anyway. And where a lot of agencies have struggled to get even one bid, you know, we're getting quite a few. And I, I think it's, I like to think it's because of the work we do to be consistent and honest and fair with all of our contractors, so they know what they're getting, and they're getting a fair shake. And we need the regional pool. So, you know, the contractors, a lot of our work is done by locals out of Montrose, but a lot of this, a fair amount's done by junction, and a lot of products wouldn't happen without them. They're not these big bad guys coming into Montrose to steal all our work. They're, a lot of the subs are still local, a lot of the materials are still local, and they're a very key part of our program in making things happen. So in this case specifically, you know, the number-two bidder felt that it should be awarded to them. Again, that's not the only metric, you know, putting ourselves in the first bidder's shoes. They had the actual low price, and were more qualified in this case. And that's where that recommendation stem from, stems from. Again, we do a lot of work with our local contracting pool, you know, Montrose specifically, but we need junction as well. It's, and it's not that far-reaching, and a lot of the money's still spent in our community. I know it can be gut-wrenching to be close and just barely lose a project. And, you know, we, we want people to come into our market, but, you know, it usually starts with being low bid, and, and working up into the larger projects. You know, this is a relatively high-risk project with the canal and all that. Not saying number-two won't do a great job, but we pick what we think is the best combination of all of it. And that's where the recommendation for KND comes from, so. So I want to let you know that it wasn't a decision we took lightly in this case, and you may hear about it. And, yeah, happy to answer any questions.
I think you should know that, I think I speak for the entire council. We appreciate what you do, what your department does, how all of you go about these projects, and the fairness of the bidding process. So, you have our total support in the way that you have been doing things, and I'm sure we'll continue to do them.
Good.
Anything else on that? Then we will move on to item 1C, Leonard Farm Edition. Mr. Reese?
Thank you, and good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Scott, if I could steal the screen from you here, so I can project. But we did receive an application for a new annexation, which is known as Leonard Farm Edition. Let me just connect here. So, this morning obviously serves as the city council work session overview. No action will be taken this morning. We do plan to bring this as a resolution to set a hearing date. That resolution will, plan to bring on September 17th, and then, on that date, we, we will propose an official hearing date of November 5th. That'll be the first reading of the ordinances, and then the second reading would be November 19th. The Leonard Farm Edition is a piece of property that's about 71.22 acres in size, and it is within the city's urban growth boundary, and the city water and sewer service areas. It's located south of Ogden Road, near and just south of its intersection with Sleeping Bear Road. It is part of an enclave, and if this annexation does go through, it won't completely eliminate the enclave, but it will reduce the size of an existing enclave. The surrounding area does have a bunch of different zoning designations. There's some R1, very low-density district to the south, R2, low-density district to the southeast, R3, medium-density district to the southwest, R3A, high-density district on both the east and west sides, and some B4 neighborhood shopping district to the northeast, as well as some areas outside of city limits immediately to the north. The applicant is requesting R3A, medium-high-density district zoning with this application, which is intended to provide for an area which is suitable for single-family homes, duplexes, and multifamily residences, along with certain other compatible land uses. This is the annexation plat itself, showing the meets-and-bounds description of the annexation, as well as showing the 1.6 contiguity requirement. So this does meet the state's annexation criteria. According to the comprehensive, according to the comprehensive plan's land use map, this area is mostly shown as residential mixed density medium, which implies that the area is appropriate for a variety of residential types mixed within it. area is appropriate for a variety of residential types mixed within a neighborhood, including single-family homes, townhomes, duplexes, and triplexes. There is also a small area in the northern portion of the property that's shown as residential mix density low, which implies that that's appropriate primarily for single-family homes, but also small amounts of attached residential development. The property is within Growth Area 2, which indicates the property is, has some level of, or has moderate proximity to existing infrastructure. And then because this is such a large area, we will need to file an annexation impact report with the county. We have received a signed annexation agreement from the applicant, and the application is all in order and does meet annexation criteria. As I said, we'll bring this as a resolution to you on September 17th for the official hearing date. But that concludes my presentation this morning. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So William, the section to the north on, between that proposed addition and Ogden Road, that's still the only remaining enclave attached to this immediate property?
Correct.
And it is, is it a separate property owner, or is it?
Yeah, so that's, I believe it's three properties, if I remember correctly, but they are separate from this property that's proposed to be annexed.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I was going to ask the same question.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. We will move on to discussion, Item 1D, possible amendments to Ordinance 2670 regarding unauthorized camping, sleeping in public, and park hours. And for that, Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Magliaro.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here to discuss some proposed changes, if council desires them, to Ordinance Number 2670. I figured I would do an initial primer as, my understanding is, some of the concern is as to sentencing provisions specifically. I like to do a primer generally on authority within the code for municipal sentencing in general, because I think it helps frame the discussion, it also helps build a record. So with council's permission, I've got about maybe 10 minutes of a thimbleful law, and I'll proceed with, from there. The first "whereas" clause of the ordinance as proposed is, whereas the city of Montrose is a home rule municipal corporation operating under adopted charter pursuant to Section 6 of Article 20 of the Colorado Constitution. I put that in the ordinance for a specific reason. It's referencing back always to the authority we have within the constitutional framework of our state. So Article 20, specifically Section 6, Sub-H, for an adopted charter, such city or town and the citizens thereof shall have all other powers necessary, including power to legislate upon, provide, regulate, conduct, and control (H) the imposition, enforcement, collection of fines and penalties for the violation of any of the provisions of the charter, or of any ordinance adopted in pursuance of the charter. That's from our state constitution. We, as a city, have adopted a charter, Article 1, Section 2 of that charter, we reserve all powers which are necessary requisite proper for the government administration of its local municipal matters, and all powers which are granted to home rule cities by the Constitution and the statutes of the State of Colorado. To any limitation upon the city's powers or the manner in which they may be exercised as imposed by any state statute or regulation is hereby superseded unless otherwise provided in the city's charter ordinances to the maximum extent of the city's power as a home rule city to supersede state law. That is an ordinance, it's Montrose Code 1-2-2B. The first thing I read was Article 1, Section 2 of the charter. Council has the reserved legislative power for the city, your legislature, that's under Article 1, Section 12, which reads, "All powers of the city shall be vested in the council except as otherwise provided by law of this charter, and the council shall provide for the exercise thereof and for the performance of all duties and obligations imposed by this, on the city by law." Article 2, Section 5 of our charter allows basically for ordinance, every act making an appropriation, creating indebtedness, authorizing borrowing money, levying a tax, establishing any rule or regulation for the violation of which a penalty is imposed, or placing any burden upon or limiting the use of private property shall be by ordinance. That's our charter, Article 2, Section 5. Within state law, there are certain parameters that set out general sentencing provisions. They are in specifically within Title 13, governing municipal court, as well as Title 31 for general police powers. As to ordinance powers in general, 3116101 of the state statutes, the governing body of each municipality has power to provide for enforcement of ordinances adopted by it by a fine of not more than $2,650, or by imposition of not more than one year, or by both such fine and imprisonment. There is one provision that I look to for limitations on the authority of a municipality to act, and it's within Title 13, specifically it's Title 1310103. Generally, that is where the state legislature has reserved to itself matters of statewide concern or stated in general to home rule municipalities. This is for us, we regulate this way, you cannot tread upon these grounds. That provision states in general, it allows that articles may be superseded by charter ordinance like we've done, but with a few specified exceptions. They include method of salary payment for municipal judges, incarceration of minors for municipal offenses, minors appearing with parents, prosecutions for domestic violence. There's a post-conviction relief piece for, that's referenced in Title 18, the right to trial by jury. So certain things that we as a municipality cannot do. Nowhere is there a limitation upon the sentencing authority of a municipality to impose a mandatory minimum anywhere that I've found within code. So with that as a framework, and with the statement also that this body is our legislature. It is the province of the legislature to set not just substantive crimes or ordinance violations, but also what those crimes may be punishable by. In general, there's references when we do that to the general sentencing provisions, which we've amended in part to react to changes to the statute I just talked about. That's in Title, or Chapter 1-2-3, that's our general sentencing provisions, and then 114-4 is the authority of our municipal court to impose sentencing. Both for adults, the penalties set a maximum of up to 364 days in jail and/or a fine of $2,650 or both. That, actually, that number, the latter for the fine, can be indexed to inflation and risen to a higher amount. We have not done that. We've generally paired our sentencing provisions within our code to what's in the state code, with some of the things I've just read. For juveniles, it's different, because the statute says it must be. So it's a fine of up to $300 and/or juvenile detention within 48 hours, and that's the range, and that's what's been advised by our municipal courts for the last four years to all defendants that have appeared before that court. So that's, in general, the sentencing authorities that exist from Constitution, state statute, as well as from charter. That's how we got where we are. Nothing in any of those prohibit a mandatory minimum. That said, nothing prohibits City Council from charting its own path legislatively on whether or not that's appropriate for a second offense, or a third, or a fourth. Couple of things to note here with the city grants pass decision itself and discussion of that framework, because there are limitations on the ability to do that, there's limitations from the Eighth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. In the discussion of grants pass ordinances and the penalties, I'd like to read a bit from the grants pass decision, and this is the majority opinion from Justice Gorsuch, after he recites basically grants passes ordinances. There's this quote, "Penalties for violating these ordinances escalate stepwise. An initial violation may trigger a fine. Those who receive multiple citations may be subject to an order barring them from city parks for 30 days. And in turn, violation of these orders can constitute criminal trespass punishable by a maximum of 30 days in prison and a $1,250 fine." I think he actually means jail. Municipal ordinances can't be sentenced to prison, but at least in most places, I don't know. Going on a bit and talking about whether or not this is in fact cruel and unusual under the Eighth Amendment, he had this to say, and this is a little further in the opinion. "Nor focusing on the criminal punishments grants pass imposes can we say they qualify as cruel and unusual. Recall that, under the city's ordinances, an initial offense may trigger a civil fine. Repeat offenses may trigger an order temporarily barring an individual from camping in a public park. Only those who later violate an order like that may face a criminal punishment of up to 30 days in jail and a larger fine. None of the city's sanctions qualifies as cruel because none is designed to superadd terror, pain, or disgrace," all that in quotes. "Nor are the city's sanctions unusual because similar punishments have been and remain among the usual modes of punishing offenses throughout the country." I'm not reading the parentheticals and the citations. "In fact, large numbers of cities and states across the country have long employed and today employ similar punishments for similar offenses." There's a citation there. "Notably, neither the plaintiffs nor the dissent meaningfully contest any of this." So that's reading from the decision itself. "That language in some of this study informed how the penalty structure was to be crafted in this case, where the initial offense proven beyond a reasonable doubt is subject to a civil fine." Also, the state handles the same things in the same way for camping, unauthorized camping in their own CRS code on state wreck areas and state parks. That is a civil infraction punishable by up to $100 fine only, with no possibility of jail. So that informed how this generally was structured for a first. For second and subsequent, the jail sentence as mentioned in grants pass was up to 30 days, and 10 is less than 30. The court has the ability to impose that and no more. But again, you are the legislature, and you can elect to chart a different course than that. So I would defer you and entertain any questions at this point unless others have anything to add.
Did you have some alternatives in mind as far as the first, second, or third offense, or is that?
Potentially. It would be, for example, and there's different ways to craft this, right? So it could be a cap of 30 for a second offense proven beyond a reasonable doubt. A civil infraction, the one exception is likely wouldn't be entitled to a jury trial right. A second, which would be punishable by jail term, would be, as well as all the full panoply of rights attendant to criminal prosecution, you have to prove that basically twice in order to get to the cap of 30. And then a third or subsequent could be punishable by the mandatory minimum. That's one way to do it. That's not the only way to do it, or the only way to craft a penalty structure, but that is an option available to you.
I had some conversations with some homeless persons, and it was really interesting. They weren't totally against the non-camping. They were more against the penalties as such, and they even mentioned to me that they had made some kind of resume, something to get together with the city and help go out and clean some of these encampments up so that they could see what they were really like. I didn't know if they had ever made that contact or not, but I was informed that there was a group that was being put together that were doing that. I am in favor of a gradual or incremental enforcement. In other words, you know, some states, it's one, two, and three, that's it. And I think that the three-strike rule probably should apply to what we're doing in this case. At least that's something that I could support. I do believe, based on the fact that one of my constituents, that's actually in my district, brought a complaint up to me and said that we really need to do something, was the fact that they, somebody was camping in a parking lot next to his house, and the next morning he got up to see what had happened, and to his surprise, he found a nice little black bag with a bunch of stuff in it, to include human waste dumped in his backyard from the persons or person that was camping in the city parking lot at the time. And he was very upset, needless to say. So I do know that there are situations that require some kind of handling.
Since I was the one that brought this up and actually requested this, kind of reevaluation of that sentencing, I also favor a more gradual approach. I think that giving judicial discretion on the second offense might be perhaps one of our options. I think that, I somewhat agree that on a third strike, I think that the mandatory sentencing is appropriate, is warranted, because one of the things that I think is kind of slipping by the wayside here is that at each one of these contacts, that they are given the opportunity to move along. It is not that they are immediately grabbed and thrown to the ground and hauled off to jail, that they are actually being given an opportunity to comply with the law before any other action occurs. And then if it is the, as Mr. Reed had pointed out, it's the conduct of denial and defiance that trigger the response. So, but I would like to give our opportunity for our discussion on a more graduated approach to give them, like on the second offense, give judicial discretion on that up to 10 days. I think the 10 days is well-reasoned, well-thought-out, well-presented. I guess my, I would just like to give our judiciary a little bit more option of flexibility on that second offense.
First of all, I think that, Ed, you talked about having this be a gradual thing, a three strikes. And what Dave just said, I think we do have the three strikes. We have the first time they're contacted, that they're said, you know, you need to move on, and then it's the second time that whichever comes back, that then it brings about this idea of the $100 fine. Okay? So that's two strikes right there. I mean, it isn't that it was on the initial contact, and the going, the mandatory sentence for jail is on the third or possibly the fourth. It's not an automatic. You know, sometimes people are thinking this is an automatic, I see a homeless person sleeping, and I walk up and I sentence him to jail. That's not the way it is. There's already steps in place before that.
Well, if the small group that caught me over by the police department, they were talking about their group of getting together and making some suggestions and that sort of stuff, and I understood, because several of the homeless people were no longer homeless, but were still advocates. And I heard something on the news recently by one of the presidential candidates that said that words without actions are just words, and I'm really hoping that this small group of people that were here at the last City Council meeting that were really opposed to this, really get involved in a group and put a group together that the city could work with, because I know Bill has said before that the city is willing to work with these if there is an outreach, but the city can't be, in my opinion, responsible for everything. We have social services for the county.
That's going to be the next agenda item, so let's not go too far there.
Okay. Well, there's social services that are, there's products that are produced by the county that could be availed or used by.
Well, I think we need to focus our discussion right now on the merits of this ordinance, the penalty provisions and those things, and as I said, the next agenda item... And as I said, the next agenda item is ripe for your comments. But you're having raised that, let me just say that what I think as a council, we had previously said, that this ordinance, as Mr. Frank said, is about conduct. It does affect a certain segment of our citizenry. There is no question about that. But the intent is to regulate the conduct in our parks. And I'll say some further comments about this as we move into the next agenda item. But I think this ordinance or proposed ordinance has had a positive effect in the matter of causing us as a council to revisit the homeless or unhoused issue in a different context than an enforcement ordinance. So that's a good thing. But we do have an issue, we all recognize it, in our, in our parks, regardless of what comments we heard last week, some of which related to the city survey, which even though there were only four hundred and some responding to that survey, it was a scientifically conducted survey. I liken that to a presidential poll. You don't go out and poll all of the voters to determine who is ahead in the presidential campaign. Such, much is, much the same as in this survey that was conducted. So there is concern within our citizenry about what's going on in our parks and the safety in our parks. And we have to control that. We have to do something about it. I would be inclined to be a little less restrictive than the original intent, but ultimately, I think we do need to impose this ordinance in substantially the same form that it's in now. But I'm open to softening the second offense. And I don't feel real strongly about it, to be very honest, because I think it is the conduct that we're trying to control. And so is it, is it appropriate to be a little more lenient, if you will, initially? Perhaps so. And I could support some form of a, an amendment to address that concern.
I'm not sure that I agree with that. I think we've discussed that on several different occasions. There have been some minor changes made to it. And I think that in most cases, the people that we're dealing with, it's going to make no difference to those folks at all. I think one of the things this does, it does help protect our citizens in the park area. It also helps, helps our police department with the actions that they have to take and our public works folks. So I'm very supportive of what we, what we have now.
I just want to, kind of, we're talking about conduct and making sure that people understand that this is relevant to the conduct. And one of the primary drivers is not necessarily only that survey, but a large component of it is also the fact that our public works department is having to expend a lot of man-hours, a lot of equipment, a lot of personal protection equipment, and a lot of disposal. Our PD is beginning involved in a lot of these cleanup efforts. That's, it's taking a lot more time and money to deal with these issues. And it's not because of the people camping in the parks, it's because they're disrespecting the fact that they're, it's not their property, as it were, that they're, they're trashing the place, that they're, they're, they're just not respecting anything about the situation, which is what's kind of leading us to this. That if the campers that were in our parks were respecting the park system, and they were utilizing our trash facilities and our restrooms in a proper way, I don't know that we would even be having this conversation. But I still would like to, I would like to open conversation, or I think we've already had conversation a little bit, about softening the second one, softening the second offense to give judicial leeway on the sentencing. But the third sentence, I'm all about, it's a mandatory, no judicial discretion.
A couple of things to add maybe to the discussion, hopefully adds to the discussion. As to point about park hours, my understanding from talking to and receiving some information from our Parks Superintendent, Dan Payne, in 2023, the Parks Department staff expended 200 hours...
I'm sorry, there was a squeak.
Sorry. These floors, I'm sorry.
We just can't get around them.
In 2023, there were 200 hours expended of staff time by the Parks Department itself in '24 to date through August, basically 319 hours. Fees expended for the 20 months from January 2023 to August of 2024 have been $3,874. I presume that's mostly fees for PPE as well as fees for dump fees and the like for use. So this is not a costless activity or conduct, the construction of structures on the park land and the, the attended issues there. The second consideration, I think, so if we, presuming that we softened the second, to allow for a cap of something underneath our threshold of up to 364 days in jail and or a fine of $2,650. If we set a cap of, say, 30, I'm just throwing that out there, and it's not to say, what is the judicial discretion? What informs that? So in the state code, there's sentencing factors for aggravation and mitigation. We, our code doesn't have those. It's our code, it's, it basically, it's, it leads it up to the court to, and often the state code sentencing factors are argued at sentencing because it's analogous, you know, and they set a good kind of paradigm for arguing what a sentence appropriately should be. Some jurisdictions have, within their municipal code, Grand Junction being one of them, mitigation for, for discretion. So this is out of Grand Junction's Code 1204-110 that relates to their camping provisions. I'll read the second paragraph. "Upon conviction for violation of this title, in addition to any other factors deemed appropriate by the prosecutor and the court, the court shall consider in mitigation whether or not the person immediately removed all personal property and litter, including but not limited to bottles, cans, and garbage from the encampment after being informed the camping was in violation of the law." Period. So it's, it's by part of their ordinance, a factor in mitigation for the court to consider. Conversely, you could build in factors in aggravation. But if you leave a cap and allow for judicial discretion, something should inform that. That's my point with that.
I really like that idea of the mitigating factor being that if they are cited for that second offense, but go in and remove their property and clean up thoroughly, that that gives the judge kind of a mitigating factor in the sentencing.
I just have one quick moment to add to that. I do think that if that's part of that sentencing, you have to, you have to consider timing. So we're receiving complaints from our citizens that our parks are, you know, trashed, there's litter. So that sentencing, that conviction, that doesn't all happen instantaneously. In fact, usually, a court process is set out at a minimum of 30 days, and then someone can request a trial. So that conviction could be up to three months away. And in the meantime, that's sitting there. So we, I think, though, we have to make sure that those are two separate situations that we have to consider and that we still have to clean that up if there's something else in the realm of community service that maybe can be considered. But, you know, again, that, that's really on that judge's, I think, discretion.
That's an excellent point. Thank you.
My understanding, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, it, we're at what, once, we're doing cleanup once or twice per month between Public Works and PD?
Sure. So we started it kind of as a, as-needed basis, you know, several years ago. However, this year in 2024, we have moved to once a month. So we schedule one cleanup per month.
Approximately how many hours are spent in that cleanup process to do that?
Well, I'm just talking about on an average, you go out, start a certain time of day, and you're there until...
Did that Public Works cleanup number include PD time?
No, that was just...
No, it isn't. That's just Public Works.
519 hours.
How much?
Yeah. Would you mind sharing it?
Yeah, I have some info on that. We track, you know, hours spent on these encampment cleanups, which can range, so it's different every month. But we're looking at this year between 40 and 80 hours per month. And that, again, is slightly increased from last year, but not a lot. But this would also be in addition to what we do on a daily basis. So this is, this is focused cleanups that we do with PD, but our park staff cleans up the parks daily.
And the 40 to 80 hours is in addition to that?
Correct.
And that is, Public Works alone does not include PD time?
Correct. Yep. Yeah, this 40 to 80 hours is just park staff.
Right.
And then, yeah, of course, PD would be in addition to that.
So if we add PD time into it, then what are we looking at?
So on average, our PD time, you know, when we, when we made up with parks, we usually start our operations around 9:00 AM. Because we have increased the cleanup, we find less, and I don't know, Jim, if you can comment on that, but it seems like we've, we've discovered less camps, so that cleanup time is quicker. So we usually end around 1:00 PM or so. In the past, though, it's, it's not been unusual to start at nine and go all the way till four or five. Our PD time is less because we're providing security, and of course, there's a lot of other transportation time and things like that that go along with it for Public Works. So our, our time is less.
So the PD also provides, I guess you'd call it, support for the Public Works in case of discovery of narcotics or weapons or hazardous materials that may require some police notification, correct?
Yeah, there's two sides to that. So not only do we provide support for those types of situations, but also we have a very specific process for collecting visible emotional, emotionally valuable property. So that's maybe some type of a prescription drug, or that's a photo of a family member or a diary. Now, we're not, because these sites can be very hazardous, we're not sending police officers or Public Works staff in to sift through property. But if it's emotionally valuable property that's visibly present, then a PD officer will take custody of that. And I'll tell you about the process even before the camp cleanup, the PD's involved. We'll take custody of that. We notice these camps ahead of time. So we have quite a bit of time invested in just patrolling, looking for these camps. We use our drone to do that. We, we, we go about doing that on foot. When we've come up with one of these camps or find one, then we notice them. So we have a specific form. We advise the individual that they have 72 hours, if they're there, to vacate and take their property with them. Oftentimes, it's quite a bit longer than 72 hours because we could probably be doing this once a week, but we'd only find maybe one or two. So we really focus on that one scheduled cleanup, but we make sure that that person at least has 72 hours. And part of that notice says, here's where you can go to collect your emotionally valuable property. And so right now, that's at Public Works. We're looking at trying to get something over at the PD parking lot, so makes it a little bit easier for folks to pick up their property. But rarely do individuals take advantage of that. And most often, when we come to these camps after we've noticed them for cleanup, they're usually abandoned, but they are full of trash and then sometimes hazardous materials.
Matt, I have a question. So the way it's currently drafted, it says, first violation, court, court shall impose a fine of $100 only, and a first violation of this section shall constitute a civil infraction.
Yes.
You have a lady or gentleman who has committed their first violation, and they say to the court, I don't have $100. What happens?
The court has a couple of options. The court can impose a, basically a collection plan with them. There's no probation in that sort of case, but in fine-only cases I've seen, they've set out kind of a payment plan to pay overtime. If that's not availing, the court under MC 114-5, I believe, has the ability to send the case to collections, in which case that's, that is also done.
And, correct me if, I'm, well, I'm, I'm asking this, it really is a question, I guess, because it's a civil infraction, could the court, as opposed to imposing a fine, engage useful public service?
Our court, as I understand the current sentencing practices, is not inclined to convert fines to UPS as a general practice. That said, I'm not sure what she would do with a civil infraction. In that context, I'm not sure if she's able to do that, to convert the sentence, because the civil infraction penalties are pretty specific. It's just fine only. It's not meant to be really anything else.
But I suppose as the legislative body, the council could craft, with your assistance, an ordinance that would, under certain circumstances, either mandate or allow useful public service, correct?
What is that CRS?
It could, however, I'm not sure if you, if you say this can be converted to UPS, whether or not you convert the nature of this civil infraction, you're doing actually a petty offense and a different animal altogether. The reason it was structured as a civil infraction was that was consistent with how the state code and also Grants Pass kind of flowed where it was fine only for a first. The civil infraction section...
And while you're doing that, the reason I'm asking the question, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting we do this, I'm just trying to find ways to address all of the issues that are raised in a situation like this. And some of what we heard from people was the fact that someone camping in the park, to impose a fine on them, may or may not mean anything. To be meaningful while still addressing the commission of the act violating the ordinance, would it be possible to say that, you know what, effectively, you broke the law, you violated this ordinance, and we're going to require that you commit to a certain time of useful public service as your punishment? Because if I don't have $100, I understand the argument, then what good does it do? But unless you're prohibited because of your health, everybody can work, and that makes you responsible for your actions, it seems to me.
Well, I'd make a comment, too, that one of the questions I had ask of PD, how do these people get the money for drugs and stuff? And a lot of that is through shoplifting, stealing stuff, and then reselling it. So there's, there are two problems there. Another aspect of that we have to look at is, in the past, we've had two or three occasions where we've had some pretty good fires get started in our timber areas. And if I'm looking at someone who's unhoused and they get 10 days in jail, there's 10 days. They are housed where they can get some help.
I'm, I'm, I'm not speaking to the, to the jail time. I have no problem at some point with that. What I'm talking about is the question of, and I'm not suggesting there is, I'd just like to have the discussion about whether there are alternatives that are meaningful alternatives to deal with the issue. that are meaningful alternatives to deal with the issue, recognizing offense, an offense has been committed. And we want to craft this ordinance and enact an ordinance that gives the PD the authority that they need. But when it comes to the being responsible for your actions, what can we impose that's really meaningful to people? So that hopefully it acts as a deterrent for future conduct.
Yeah, I kind of agree with the, the dollar value of the fine. Probably if they had the money, they wouldn't be in the situation they're in. But I also have to look at the standpoint, the situation these people are in. What are the chances anybody would want one of them to come in and working 20 hours or 40 hours?
They, they clean the parks.
Sweep the streets, yeah.
My understanding from years ago, though, was that community service became a real problem for our system because they have to be transported, they have to be supervised. And so it became a very costly thing to do, to have community service.
And were they housed during that time that we're asking them to, to work these hours?
My experience recently indicates that several of the people that I met actually had mental issues. Okay? They were receiving some kind of either medication or something. But they were also receiving some form of disability payments. They weren't very much, I think the, the highest one I talked to was around $600 for the month. It was from disability payments from the state for whatever his mental health problem was. So there, there are some, there is some ability to pay. I'm not sure if $100 is too much at one time or, or what. But I, I do know from my just recent experience that, that again, there, there are some ability to, to pay. Not to mention that several of them are out panhandling and receiving funds that away. So.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that. And I think a lot of that, though, is quite frankly anecdotal. But I guess I would like to put our city experts on the spot and direct my question to Mr. Bell and Chief Hall. In your respective opinions, are there alternatives to monetary, the monetary imposition of fines? Or is that really, from a practical standpoint, the only way to address the issue?
I'll speak too. Having them work with our crews to clean up the parks, I don't think we would want that. They do have mental health issues or drug and alcohol dependency. It's a huge liability to the city just to have our trained, vetted staff out there picking up needles and sharp objects, and the camps are just not safe. I was just looking at a bunch of other photos that we could, you know, anytime you want, share with anyone from the community to see what actually is in these camps. So it's very unsafe to do that. So we wouldn't want to put people in harm's way that aren't adequately trained or able to handle that situation.
And I would, I would agree with City Manager Bell on all those points. And then just add that this is a civil fine. And so this is not a criminal penalty of convicted, and so it doesn't go on a criminal history. I think the staff really tried to suggest something, it's like locks on your car door. It's for those folks who, based on conduct, may violate this ordinance, but then realize this is not something that they should or could do anymore. And so it really is a lesser, probably one of the less, less offenses for this type of conduct in our ordinances, a civil fine. I do not think that just because of the unintended consequences of supervision, management, scheduling, coordination, being able to have some type of UPS program, it would be very, very difficult.
You guys, thank you. You've answered my question. I appreciate that. I, I, I'm just searching to see if there are alternatives. And what I'm hearing, really, there's no practical alternative.
I, I would agree. As the prosecutor, you know, that's been in that court for four years in the municipal court. I, I think you would, going off of Chief Hall's point. You would change the nature of what's charged if you had a UPS provision in it, because civil infractions have their classification, and they are, a civil infraction is a civil matter. That's just reading from CRS 162.3101. So I, I don't think you can impose that without changing the nature to something else.
Thank you. So let me try and bring the conversation around. Does council want to further consider and discuss some different way, if you will, of treating first and second offense, or second offense, from the way it has been presented to us for consideration? Is this something that you would like to take under further consideration and advisement before giving directions today? What's your pleasure?
No, I'm, I'm happy with where we are right now. I think, having gone through it, the discussions we have, I have no problem with the ordinance as written.
I support the ordinance as written.
I'll go with the consensus of the group, but I wouldn't, I would still, I would love to see judicial discretion on second offense, if that would be the will of the remaining council.
Well, I'm with Mr. Frank after my conversations. I think that, that there is a possibility that some of the people that are out there don't necessarily belong in jail or, or fined $100. But by the same token, I do believe that we need to do something to protect the other community members as to what's right and what's wrong. It's, it's a hard decision. I'm not Solomon.
So, so I, I have two council members who feel it's appropriate to move forward with the ordinance as drafted. I think Mr. Frank is saying that you would go with the consensus, but you'd like to have some judicial discretion involved. And Ed, is, that's your position also?
Yeah.
I, I don't know that I'm prepared to, to give direction on that one. I, I think there needs to be some, some further thought, consideration, and discussion. My recommendation would be that we either move forward with the ordinance as it is presented, or we take some further time to discuss mandatory versus discretionary authority in this ordinance. That would be my thought.
I think that probably after our next discussion, there may be some clarification of that.
If I just may, for clarification purposes, at a work session, I can bring four different versions of the same ordinance for council consideration, correct? Okay. Perhaps that may be the, I would suggest, perhaps maybe that is the better course. I can draft something that has a different sentencing provision in it, and then we can compare that to what's in the packet now, if that's council's pleasure. And then we can make a.
For the next work session.
For the next work session. So it would not go in the regular session for next.
Great idea. Do we have a consensus to move forward in that direction?
I just, back to something Doug said earlier, I don't want to have words without action. I see no reason to have something that doesn't have a definite action that goes with it. And if it's a discussion of one person to determine whether they're going to enact our ordinance or not enact it, I have problems with that.
I think that's a fair comment.
So your suggestion is that we move forward with the ordinance as it is presented, without further discussion and without further input from Mr. Magliaro?
Correct.
I agree. I'd have to disagree.
I'm sticking with my original statement. I'd love to see the, a little bit more flexibility just on the second offense.
My suggestion then would be, because there is substantial agreement on what we should be doing, but not total agreement. If, I would like to, with council's permission, direct Mr. Magliaro to come back at the next work session with what you just proposed. And perhaps in the interim, there'll be further direction. But at this point, that would be my suggestion, to have you present that at the next work session. And if council feels the way they do now, it's probably likely that we'll move forward with what's before us. But I'd like to give that one more opportunity for you to present that.
Are you okay with that?
Yes. I'd also like to make a direct comment that Mr. Magliaro's preparation and knowledge on this is amazing. I, I was just, I was actually kind of shocked when he had to actually look something up, because he normally, you have everything right there, and you're, you're so prepared, and you're so well organized on this. And I just want to thank you for your, your level of expertise and professionalism. I think it's very outstanding. Thank you.
And I know this has been a difficult one, and we appreciate, to back up what the mayor pro tem said. And thank you for all of your efforts on this. We appreciate your efforts and all of staff's efforts to, to find a workable solution that's in the best interest of the community, and I know that's where everybody is. So if there's no further discussion on this one, does staff have anything further to add? Then let's move on to discussion item 1E, which is discussion related to the city's role in accommodating the unhoused population. And if I might preface this discussion, kind of with what I was saying a few minutes ago. I, I think, at least speaking for myself, that it's, the discussion of ordinance 2670 has really helped prompt, I think, a discussion of the city's role and responsibility in dealing with the homeless or unhoused situation that we have amongst some of our citizens in the community. So I'm very happy that it has prompted that discussion here. And I'm hopeful this will be a fruitful and productive discussion where we can kind of start to wrap our arms around how do we deal with a very serious situation in our community? And, and what services can the city provide now and going forward in the future to mitigate the homeless situation in our community? And is the city the right agency to be in charge of that? My, my initial thoughts are, yes, there's a lot of good being done by other organizations, religious and otherwise, within the community. I'm not sure they have the resources and the manpower to spearhead a total commitment to dealing with this situation. So my inclination is, if not the city, then who? And I think that it's something that we should very seriously consider. Not that we're going to have all of the answers, not that the city is going to do all of the work, financial and otherwise. But perhaps we are the lead agency in addressing this issue going forward. And I don't know what addressing it means today. Hopefully, we'll have a little better idea once we've had the conversation. That being said, I, I guess, Mr. Bell, maybe turn it over to you. I'm sorry.
I was just going to say that Mr. Hochwald has already set up our homeless coalition, where we are already meeting and have had one meeting already and are scheduling our next, with all of our nonprofit and secular and religious partners in dealing with this. And I just want to give that acknowledgement that that already has been taking place.
Good point.
And Mr. Hochwald has been, like, leading the charge on that. So kudos.
And I believe I saw on the calendar, another meeting has already been scheduled of that. Yep.
Yep, it's, it's in the process of getting scheduled.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So the discussions, really, this has been over years of discussion. But like you mentioned just recently, it's brought it to the forefront again. So I think we should talk about it and decide what kind of direction we want to move forward. We can either remain status quo. Our position at the city has been an arms-length transaction with the entities that provide social services and provide housing and food and those types of resources to our unhoused population. We've donated money on an annual basis to a variety of nonprofits that are engaged in that work. We've provided a building of ours, the old Brown Center building, next to the animal shelter for emergency shelter during the winter months and migrant farm worker housing in the summer months. And we've been doing that for years. We, this isn't the first time we've talked about this since I've been here. I've been here about 13 years. And just pulling up some of the details and looking back, things are coming kind of full circle from the last time we had these discussions. So in March of 2017, I put together, working with the variety of nonprofits and religious institutions, we put together a homeless forum at the pavilion. It was a two-hour event where the first hour was made up of panelists from the state, federal level, as well as local and regional service providers, really, who, who help in this area, the experts and the ones who provide funding for things like shelters and specialized service buildings and those types of things. So we had a really good meeting. We had, it was estimated at 450 people attending at the pavilion auditorium. We heard from those panelists for the first hour, and then the second hour of that event, we heard from homeless individuals and people on the front lines at that time. A lot of work with Christ Kitchen, Shepherd's Hand, Gary Martinez, Jim Renfro, and a lot of different people that are still in our community today, working in that area. So that was well received by the community. We heard a lot of different perspectives at that meeting and learned a lot of things by getting everyone together. We had asked Chris and Jayce to put together a smaller group, a coalition again, which is what we did last time to start this process, which led to the forum. As a follow-up to that forum, we came up with a lot of discussions around what's the proper way to handle the situation. Of course, nobody in the United States knows, or we would already have the best practice model, and everybody would be adopting that. So every community is a little bit different. There isn't a one-size-fits-all for every community, is the most important thing to understand. And there's nothing that's going to 100% solve the issue. We looked at some best practice communities at that time. Colorado Springs had a good model. We looked at a few others across the country. But the biggest, most important thing to come out of all those discussions that involved hundreds of people was that building a shelter is not the answer to resolve the issue. And now, we've changed terminology, so we'll try to be politically correct. It's the unhoused population, but at that time, it was the homeless. You can build a shelter, but if you don't allow people into the shelter because they're under the influence of drugs and/or alcohol, or they have severe mental health issues, where they're violent, or they're a danger to others, they're still going to be unhoused because they can't get into shelters that are there. Across the country, building a shelter with no rules and you allow everyone in, nobody does that anymore. It's very dangerous to do that because there's a variety of people who are unhoused. They all come from different circumstances, different backgrounds. And so it's really hard to categorize everyone into that same box. We've seen that on a local and regional level as well. With the emergency shelter, they have some screening in place there. It used to be the, the Delta Connection or Something Connection in Delta, Abraham Connection, thank you. Before we allowed the Brown Center to be used, there was a bus that would take people down from Montrose County down. down from Montrose County, down to Delta County, but then they started to see an influx of their own population, and so they stopped receiving the Montrose people, and that's what started our conversation about needing our own emergency shelter in the winter. So there is no easy answer, but again, just like back in 2016 and 17, we've heard enough lately that I think it's worth the discussion here at the city on, should we take a more active role in this? If so, you know, we have the most monetary resources other than the county. The nonprofits struggle to make ends meet. They can get grants and those types of things, but it's really hard for them to just have enough resources to build anything from a capital perspective, or to start up new programs that will sustain themselves and last for many years. Once you enter down this road, once you go onto it, it's a forever situation. So, once you go into the world of providing shelter and things like that, they don't go away. In fact, we've seen across the country, once you build those things, it does become type of a destination, where it does travel through the populations around, especially within our own state and our own region. One of the things we have, we love living here in western Colorado, because the weather's so amazing, it also is warm outside most of the year, and people are able to do kind of a nomadic transient lifestyle here a little easier than they can in Chicago or other places, where it's very, very cold most of the year. One last thing with all of this, is it's really important to understand what those best practices are, and I don't know what they are today. I just know what they were in 2017, and that was not to just build a shelter, but to provide wraparound services to all of the people within the shelter or seeking shelter. And so at that time, we were partnering with the Center for Mental Health, which has now been sold to a different company. And so a lot of the players are different today, but at that time, we came up with the idea, looking at other places, that you could build a shelter, but you could also build a facility that included mental health, counseling services, drug and alcohol addiction therapy, which is very important, partnering with community corrections, people that have been released from prisons and sent back to our communities. We know as the prison, as the rules related to who can stay in prison and who can't are changing in states like Colorado and Oregon and other places, we're releasing drug offenders, they're getting sent back home, and they're not necessarily rehabilitated, and so we're seeing some of those issues as well. So a good partnership along the lines of work release and community corrections is really important. And then having services, partnering with workforce development, partnering with other area people who can talk about how to go out and apply for a job, how to go out and really build your resume, how to build a life, is really, or rebuild your life, in the case of the situational homeless. So, there's so many aspects to it, that we could talk for days and days about it. So I'll end there, and just hear what all of you have to say on it.
At the Colorado Municipal League Conference last year, or the year before, I guess, we did a number of tours of homeless areas, and the unhoused rehabilitation facilities, unhoused authorized camping areas. And one of our local municipalities, I think it was Delta, but I'm not certain, they tried doing an authorized camping area, and it backfired horribly on them, and they had a problem with predatory behavior, because it was an unmonitored, unvetted entry into that. And I think that really supports what Mr. Bell was saying about, that's just really not a viable road for us. One of the things that they found, and this is anecdotal, I will admit, from reading reports and talking to people, is that the problems they had is, once you build a facility, then you're stuck manning it, staffing it, and providing program guidance for all of the programs that are there, and the funding sources are variable, and they're not reliable. And that was one of the reasons, one of the people I was talking to over on the front range, said they had such a problem with it, was because they're, they didn't have the budgetary resources to continue to support something. Because as, as somebody said, you know, the answer's not cheap. And I think that's one of the things we need to be considering, is that, I don't want to reduplicate, reinvent the wheel, but I would love to have us to be able to provide better support for those partners that are already providing those services, rather than duplicating those services.
Yeah, when we, when we did this back in 1617, it was estimated, based on looking at other places and best practices, that you could get a grant to build a shelter or a facility of some type, but it's a one-time grant, it doesn't have sustained operational monies, and it would be up to $1 million a year, was the estimate on what it would take to operate that type of facility. So whatever we decide to do to move forward, we just need to know that there is an expense to making those decisions.
I'm certainly, I'm certainly fine with continuing this discussion and getting all this involved, but I think we need to start with Montrose County, since they actually have health and human services, which we don't have. And I would just like to have their involvement in the discussion.
I would agree with that. I guess, and Bill helped me here, but we're nowhere near any kind of obvious decision-making mode at all. I think we're in a, if we're going to move forward, we're going to move forward with what I would characterize as an exploratory stage, which, again, as I would see it, we would invite all of the players, including the county, to participate in a roundtable discussion that would focus on what you guys are doing.
So that's already what, that's already what Mr. Hawke Walt's doing. So I don't want to reinvent the wheel.
Would you want to speak to that, Jen?
Yeah.
If I might add something, I think it's very important that, in my recent conversations, that market, our support in some instances of market rate apartments, is not looked upon very, help, in a sense, to help the community, the ones like, they're building over the rec department, where they're looking at 80% and 50% of, or 60% of people's income. I had conversation with several people that are trying to get on that list for those apartments, and I think it would behoove the city to actually go out and look for more of those projects, rather than come to us and say, hey, can we build here?
Well, I can, I'll speak, I think, to the unhoused topic, just because that's the topic of discussion. I know we're running a little light on time, but yeah, what we did, and a lot of kudos to Chris Ottinger, our community development specialist, is start a discussion, more or less right now, with a number of providers in the valley, in the area, to discuss what some issues are, problems are, what some potential solutions are, but we're kind of in the early stages of that. My last comment at that last meeting, at that roundtable discussion, was, you know, this is, we're early. Let's, let's keep these conversations going, let's make sure we continue to talk about this. Because as Bill mentioned, it's no easy problem. It's dealt with in a number of communities throughout the country. It's been dealt with in some capacity or another in every jurisdiction I've worked for, and there's no perfect solution for it. But at least the starting point is to get those service providers in the room, to get that collaboration started. I think that was a great opportunity to just understand who the players are around here, because that provided introductions that might not have already been made. And so the next meeting is going to contain a focus on that, and building of those relationships. We haven't set out to have any particular goals, in the sense of, what are we going to do, what are the next steps moving forward in terms of the process, or procedures, or the plans in place, but to continue that discussion, to see what kind of flesh is out of that process. And then obviously, having city council involved, as to, you know, where you want to direct staff and our resources. But I see our role as that facilitator role, more so than, say, service provider role, but bringing those providers together, making sure everybody's on the same page.
If council were inclined to continue to pursue this, what recommendations can you make to the council as to how we can help you in the capacity that you have, the role that you've assumed in this?
I think it's still exploratory right now. I think as we're talking about here at this table, I think from a staff standpoint, and from that, I don't, we haven't formalized a name of coalition or anything like that yet, maybe that'll come, but I don't know that I have any particular thoughts or recommendations at this point in time, given where we're at. But as we continue to have some of those discussions, I think we can present some of that information to the city council moving forward. Happy to do that.
My perspective on this is that this isn't a new problem. This isn't an easy problem, and there are a lot of knee-jerk reactions that have failed horribly. And I really like the idea of us proceeding thoughtfully, carefully, with good communication with our partners, and I think that Mr. Ottinger and his work on this, as well as Mr. Hawke Walt's work, I think I would just support us continuing that conversation, and finding out first, exactly what do we need to do, before we jump into, oh, we're going to go fix it by plugging our finger in the dam. I would rather have us have a thoughtful response to that. And I think this is the method I prefer, and I really salute and admire the way you're doing it.
And one thing, I keep bringing up this conversations I've had with the homeless, because they actually presented some really good ideas, and one of the ideas that they said was referring to the county should get involved, specifically based on the fact that, that if Montrose initiates this ordinance, a lot of these people that are specifically living within the city boundaries are going to be moving to the county boundaries, and that's going to create problems for the, for the county also. So somewhere along the line, we have to get together with the county and the social services to see how we can get this thing, it's not going to be perfect, but, but it, I think, the sooner, it's better than pulling that wagon.
Well, I, I think, from what I'm learning today, there is a vehicle in place to address this issue, and I would think that, to back you guys up, it would be, if the council is so disposed, to make it very clear that this is a serious issue to this county, and we support the efforts that have been engaged in by these guys, and we are here as a resource, and we are here to provide whatever assistance we can, moving the process forward, because it is important. Is that a fair statement?
I agree with that. I also would like to recommend, I mean, Mr. Bell has got a vast knowledge, a lot of training, a lot of experience in this, and just us relying on your input on this also is very critical and very important. And so I'd like to continue to encourage you to provide your input on this to us as well.
My question is, what does it do to the ordinance that we're proposing?
Nothing.
So, it's still, it's still going to come up, and we're still going to approve it in some form?
Yeah, these, these are two unrelated topics.
Well, I don't necessarily think that they're too unrelated, based on the fact that-
We have not pulled the ordinance, Ed. The ordinance is still before us.
Okay, but we have an organization that we're going to support, and-
Has nothing to do with the ordinance.
Okay, as long as we, we decide that some type of ordinance is necessary, then, then that's important.
Let me make it perfectly clear. The discussion we are having with Jase and with Bill has nothing to do with the council's consideration of the ordinance we just previously discussed.
Okay.
I would like to just say that we, as council, are willing and wanting to be involved to support Jason, Chris's efforts with the unhoused. I think that the three of us learned quite a bit when we were at that meeting, and Blaine, sorry, you were there too. So, I would, because I don't know in the past that we've had council support for anything having to do with this, and I would like to say that we, that we as a council do support this issue.
I totally agree with you, Judy Ann. So, have we beat that one to death?
I think so.
Okay. Thanks, Jase. Thanks, Bill. All right. Item number two. General city council discussion. Does council have anything in particular they would like to discuss?
I would just like to say that last week, Mr. Frank and I went down to a CML meeting at Drangle. I think it was well worth the information we got down there, and I hate to say it, but he really did a pretty good job on his section of presentation of it.
Thank you.
Judy Ann, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Mr. Yulber, do you have anything?
No, not this time. Thank you.
Nothing? Staff comments? Chief?
Just a reminder for the September 17th city council meeting session at 5:00 PM, we'll be swearing in several police officers, both from our police academy and then from our lateral hires, so I think our intention is to swear in seven new police officers, which is excellent, and hiring is still going great, so looking forward to possibly getting some more. But just a reminder, 5:00 PM, September 17th.
Would you also remind us about the graduation ceremony coming up?
Absolutely. September 11th, at 5:00 PM at the Montrose Pavilion, and all of these events will be on the council calendar. We will be graduating, I think, 11 cadets, assuming that they all pass the post-test, from our Western Colorado Law Enforcement Academy. So that's going to be a great event. Courtney always does such a good job.
She does. She really does. Other staff comments?
I just want to say thanks for that discussion that we just had, and Judy Ann was correct, we didn't necessarily have a majority of council in the past. We were, as staff, kind of winging it last time, so to know that we have council support allows us to go out and have those meetings.
Great.
So, thank you.
Thank you. No other staff comments? If not, we'll stand adjourned from the work session.
No, can you just kidding? You didn't have to stand?
Oh, no, I had, I definitely had to stand.